House of Work Section 23 dash zero nine to order, Sam will call please.
Martin.
Here.
Burkhardt. Pope. Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Good.
Let's uh, Paula waiting for custom open to arrive, let's go ahead and just jump down to item three C. You do citywide traffic studies where they get.
Yeah, we had our second open house um to present the findings from the survey and our national on April twenty sixth. Um here it's a call and uh. We were able to present to a few people about what we found and we presented this information to the public works have opportunities over here. In front of all caps and I call it uh. Kind of the tier with all of what I had to do through the presentation over. So thank you for my generation uh soccer uh parents name and last name. So uh briefly and then I have Osama a deal with us to monitor young traffic in the near future really into the data so there's my specific question. He probably better prepare to some of these guys here. Um so just briefly and uh this is uh swan you put all up to the twenty six forty and had. With uh uh this actually overall traffic, citywide traffic say. Uh we've talked a little bit about the goals, the survey results, um we used two different methods study uh drivers and information. And then uh we had a third play also this information. And then talk a little bit about what we see and maybe the results from the information that's been collected, let's talk briefly about the next steps. A little bit about the overall goals, uh I think it is part of the P survey that it all flow out um every year, every year. Every year uh and one thing that comes back is that you know we're studying overall traffic flow and see in Johnson. So that kind of spurred the study and what we're looking to do is move us some short term on solutions uh to some of the. Uh problem that we go through this this study. Uh one of the things you know there's an interesting sort of products which can use whatever that may be. Um when they look at that and also look at the overall um. Yeah come up with some process and some potential improvements for some problem area. And then really kind of feed this in hoping to your C I P plans such as making better informed decision and going through that process.
That's in the area.
Okay, uh so first thing to do is send out a traffic congestion survey uh. Uh the city uses city social media channels to uh broadcast that out. Um we also sent out a briefing for five thousand mailers um to different places of the city. Uh both side that give people to respond, um get four five hundred forty respondents and want to learn several comments. That we got back to this method. Uh the second method we use is something a little more uh. Social media driven uh it's called Mac social and there's an interactive map that folks can actually identify the locations of issues in town. For basically my comment on on traffic in the city. And so we had another forty three comments there as well as people either supported the flights or disliked whatever comments were. Last uh former communication had our input, those were really written verbal communications uh with public meetings emails and their staple reviews. And we had a series of staple meetings, I believe with uh. That was uh nice to be so different. And then also um British off fairway there um John here ID we did not send to be. So we tried to solicit some online but the whole teams. I definitely within there it was contact with all of them. A little bit about the overall survey results, um. Of the the people that we spot eighty three percent were uh residents in City of Johnston. And of that, about sixty percent of them uh communicate via basis in around Austin. But just briefly uh in general, uh. Um one of the questions that we asked was um. How they have an issue to say traffic congestion in the way as you can see in Johnson. Overall, you can see uh fifty four test. So that did a benign other core to small issue with the remainder of that being harder and no five percent but I know the issue. One of the things uh with next we fly we've done really shocking here it's pretty much what we would see uh on our um response but we wanted to go ahead and be able to validate that. Essentially you wanted to see what they were having issues based on their perspective and also what time they. And the two graphics you see here uh is obviously Monday to Sunday on the left. And you can see Monday through Friday, generally it's it's pretty consistent Friday that we can see traffic I uptick. Uh throughout the day and say hi normally you can kind of see the red van on the left is when uh. People indicate that was kind of once a fall in downtown. Uh and then obviously with the drop off on weekend of the traffic uh for city like on Merle they roll it across one bit. And uh what type it goes down and but if major girls in community garden on twenty five forty five percent eighty mark of sixty second half me. Kind of restaurant hundreds three that is all about that so now. And you can see the graph in the right it's actually it's um put the line Monday on top Sunday on five. You can't see with the traffic uh which is a lot of traffic they haven't shaved exactly. And so it's a tail off now for the bottom of the sheet. Um right here you just can't see what the traffic follow up that corresponds to to the ground now. So the time today uh obviously it's a A M E. Uh early the P M E being on layer issue. Uh and I studied running the afternoon from three three five and six P M. You can't see on the left there with the red bar increases and green uh decreases it's creating meaning for easiest get around. To be bred and still a dog and that also corresponds to when you see most back. And one of the things that um we had certain questions of the survey. And both during the A M and P M Ps um the the issue that the public identifying. But really uh the traffic signal operations overall timing with traffic signals system speed and issue with school building. Uh both in the A M and P M P um they're just plenty different. As far as the prioritization uh but they are the same same tree. What is the greatest traffic concern in the city of Johnson based on the feedback? Of this, uh we had two questions in here and there's maybe breakfast back looking back with me usually with that. But really if you look at the first one, school drop off pickup area. There are times the traffic signal operation sees and then school does. And school zone and the school drop off and pick up there's probably some overlap and people standing there. Um so I'm speaking with all in some, you know, we really look at the drop off as event and the school zone is really a little bit. I know I live up on agreement I was in Oregon, still I queue in the morning on week six or even level improvements. And then which factors do you think contribute the most to aid in Justin? And uh obviously the times that everybody's coming to work at the at the employers in town um. Uh was probably it was one of those events by most. Uh currently road being down to be wrong that had traffic license version destruction and then you know so yeah, search all years. Uh obviously construction really did reach that uh impact of that uh particularly during the summer time. And I hit the overall traffic signal and schools on. Now, I'll just let you know during the the A M E. You know, heats you get about sixteen to twenty four percent of the overall track travels in those speed time frames throughout the day. Uh so the comments that we did receive uh right now broadly under uh hundred capacity roadways. Uh of that, there is a twelve percent of the comments are specifically targeted to northwest hundred street where they don't see the other project going on right there. Uh going on right now, so that will be able to announce the rest of the per town those comments we just had spread uh randomly throughout the cities all the stuff everybody input in terms of the day. So the next uh question survey then um due to factors from the previous question to be discussed. I need to adjust the department time uh key worker control that can be able to avoid the suggestion of the way. And you look essentially forty percent of people are saying they don't adjust their their time if you leave, we just essentially feel a bit. Uh the other thirty six percent they may give us one of the three times we. Do that. Uh one of the things we want targeted with the question on on the right hand side. It's just really where are they getting their source of information about traffic congestion? And uh I think you can see obviously the radio is the first one on the left right there. More and more people are going to those mobile mapping apps and ways uh Google maps. So um we really want to backcharge this to see if there's a better way to be able to communicate particularly the instruction impacts throughout the city uh there is. And then uh this is kind of an open that question almost ready is they feel without reduce the way you know increasing improvement in traffic several times. And I think the I C A program we have going on with Merle hey road will be the people that address that. Uh issue that people have and then adding more lanes and certain locations. And then group in conditions that so on so forth they feel down. Uh next question uh we thought went into a little bit was just you know just overall speed uh in in the city. Um and try to meet some uh in one location where you have the people's perspectives. Um for this area, obviously concerns within the school zones. And then residential streets and then that just kind of decreases uh nervous season six week over now wait before that.
Patrick, bring him on, was there an opportunity for them to identify with residential streets they had concerns about?
What's happening, can you dig into the specific residential?
Yeah, and that's what is very.
Can you share the word?
Uh the last question is very important question and and we decided in fact if we're able to have. In fact, if you work with us on this and we categorize them and then we don't have anything which you promise. Um so regardless, sometimes the patients when they concern their pain. I don't believe this particular patient's heart in the presentation here today, but really one of those had. Actually, yes, for me. They would take any action when these three are there.
I can speak very yards out of my neighborhood, we don't work right now, so people aren't that.
Did I I I've been curious to know whether or not anybody I've had a kind of parkway. Many times when I'm walking down that trail. Awesome cars going faster than we should be going.
And and that'll be kind of in the data that we get, this is just the information we identified those issues generally, so. In our next meeting we'll have a little bit more information. So we uh got into a little bit about the signalized intersection. Again, seventy four percent of people go with intersections, signalized intersections, we say uh mostly say. Uh the interesting thing I thought with the roundabouts, um that's eighty seven percent of the people feel like the roundabouts are safe, they're often say. Uh so I think about what we started that that was ten four range today, that's a committee. So you think shows that the research that was done by the fact so that. Another question that I do was uh you know what, what what do they feel were the contributors that they did improve the safety in Justin? And uh if you kind of look again, these big bands here. On the left and the right being very high contributors, they're saying the public they felt and they're very involved. And it kind of goes around, this hits a little bit into the safe routes school uh study that we've done, the walkability study. Uh on improvements to uh the the pedestrian and non-automized vehicle. And so if you look, the very first one up here is for better access for people with disability. Uh there's no one on here, increased walking times and cross street and stuff, so there's something you're finding here with with the traffic component with with the walkability state. Then inviting all the comments that we got from the survey as well as match social data uh to feedback that we got there to think it's like it's overall driver expectancy. And then safety related concerns, traffic signal concerns and then the vulnerable users. And then getting into the the uh school zones. And and really just trying to identify any trends or any maybe as a location. Um obviously nowhere along with we were not specifically about schools on per se. Uh but horizon always something you able to create on my truth were were top ones right there. Um top three issues that I've mentioned, you saw it all with speed. The well turned traffic and then this has nine instructor related type issues on staff major related. So moving on from from the input process, updating some of the data, um it's really digging into the crash data provided by United V F. Um here's an overall map of the from specific major intersections we found. Uh and what we have uh with the crash coming out there. Uh this is just a simple inventory rate how we're going ahead and dive deeper so on yellow and black weather corner and red. We'll dive in deeper to see if there's any sort of uh you know, will it prove that improvements can be made to reduce or other crashes on the road.
Hey Patrick, on on that slide, so I'm looking at the kind of the intersection of seventy and a hundred. Yes. Um and that's marked in red, so wondering is there's is resume data showing um trends since that became a roundabout? Is that improved the numbers or what impact that's had? I mean, it's it's to the extent that you're going to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we we've talked about this a little bit in the office and and the other one is sixty second and. Next, uh on the other roundabout right there, uh you look at the line um we what's up? Oh sorry, we have to look at the other uh I haven't dug into details specifically. Um you look at seventy and hundred roundabout, that's where we have splitter ends with a little bit bigger roundabout, so people may be going. And it's a little more confused, right? So it takes you a little while, very bad first couple of times I'm to it, but that's one of the things that we're protecting.
Well, that would be just an interesting kind of C P S uh to what it gives you the ability to and obviously try to statistically be interesting to look at those. Intersect and I can't remember was that or was that just stop sign or was that?
Ah, it's a signal. Like for example.
And for example.
Yeah, we had temporary signal at seventy eight dollar or uh it stops times and then once it turns into a signal and then with the with the down credit. Uh this next one and getting to the operation side of it, um so what you see here is really uh two circles. The inner circle shape is the A M E period and when the outer shade is the P M period. So really looking at two intersections that have local service B and F. Uh P E and Merle hey road and Beaver Drive intersection out there in P M. And then as well as Beaver Drive, uh those Beaver Drive and six six in the P M. Uh but yeah, uh short term improvements, we kind of, this is an example, start getting into then as we further answer the data. And and these are some improvements and I know this is kind of an ordinary traffic study there with the uh was it the result of the re-expenses soccer deals. Uh some concern that the residential is out there. Uh you know, traffic signals and times were concerned out there, so at least in Justin sort of time for the testing perspective. And then I think uh was the Jenny women's out there. But I meant to location where that uh they had a flash in yellow, a missing flash yellow. Um so we had they had a uh was it west on south hall movement for the flash and you know arrow at time. Um so looking at the crash site, we think they were at a point inside. We went ahead and removed that during peak periods of day to uh. They ran deep some of the tight jump accidents that would be now there, so that's just a red arrow, there's no provisitive movement in that intersection. So again, we'll dive into each intersection of concern like that and just kind of look at it from a whole lot of perspective. And then uh this location with that traffic state of the scene for pretty quickly, so maybe you go at this pretty inexpensive change rather. Um Merle hey road, I mean the part of it is just another example here. Um so it's been identified public is lower left is a traffic signal concern, traffic safety concern, this overall driver expectancy there. Um you look at severity, you got the accidents up here. Um again, it's seventy three percent of the whole enter injured accident, so it's you know, it's probably pretty minor vendor vendors, but it does have some. Some uh accidents have gone on, twenty five crashes. So kind of the last step in this overall process, then I will be working with the uh twenty forty. You know, there are um plans to know if there are any. And look at the uh undeveloped areas, go ahead and assign some trips, ego areas. And then uh street goes through our network, go ahead and you run analysis. If you were trying to ensure any potential issue improvements. And so I was saying, the findings, I believe uh the next public meeting is June twenty eighth, I think it's been scheduled for with. So we now there's like we look to be done uh maybe next time we.
Patrick, what could the residents expect that you mean?
At the June, June twenty eighth meeting, what we plan to do is bring back, you know, the intersection and some of those long and short term. Uh improvements that we can make and then what we would do is this will take some public input on those solutions. And then as you can see, we'll have we'll go back, make any changes that we can or where it makes sense and then we'll. Uh bring back and involve us to find a report with with those changes they. But we'll have, we'll be about eighty five and eight weeks to complete. So we've got a little bit of the next few changes.
Yeah, little you answered the big with June.
Yeah, June twenty eighth, you got the one that you just said that um last week, always sending out invite us to the entire council, would that be?
Okay, it's it's a just a June, so it didn't have a specific, but that's.
Yeah, and that was at our public house, the public of a house that we gave to decide something then.
The other questions for Patrick or for Matt?
Thank you.
I just want to thank all of you, uh done a lot of good work on and 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 the rest of the public team as well, done a lot of good work on this. I think that you know you provided good information along all along the way, soliciting public inputs, so I think again, we're going to have a good, good product. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The. Should we do poll sessions or just back up? Poll session, okay, we're going to back up to the top of the agenda then. And we're going to do a little session I have now. What we have on here again is the poll section for Iowa in section twenty one with five one J. Make sure you got your. On stage, we're working with the slogan to be reasonably expected, not to be surprised, certainly not even a lot of them. Maybe that right now back in the call in session. Take up the last item on margin of the city and then discuss the alcohol noise and events policy in the yard.
Good evening, Mayor Council, uh I'm going to do my best to walk you through multiple layers of the discussion here, probably two guidance. And we'll be talking about some of us. Um. Kind of take that back and look at six short with the most relevant events and then we turn on the giving city files and then back which you know the problem you are. And it's going to start from uh we're we're bringing it really about our city, you know, the the more the part of this. To try to figure out how we best manage the situation, we would pick your knowledge and special events category. Um if if you look at some of the things that were proposed for the conference next year, we guys want to stay on set and we want to solve this. So so when we're looking at at the larger, it's for example, uh that part of the quarter, we can also some larger events that will involve alcohol and diseases that nature. We we met with each of those states holders as well as all that information, try to figure out the best way to work through that and what we'll be doing is providing to. Make your last spots also to be able to get those things that's. When when we look at the application of that commission, you have to define the area. Of an alcohol service that you don't help make a division, there are certain regulations that apply to that. You also have a smaller state where we're talking to the most farmers who want it and it might be that a promotion without color, we're talking. So this is out there. With those point of reason, that's great. The one we did was that it's not a particular to new that by the way, the last product. So in doing another option, you would say it would be an extension of existing one of the losses to those still owners. But in doing that, you end up in a situation where it has to be continuous to the diversity order and you know, which is forget the day of that is showing now phone grows. And and also the other things that we did in problem. So what we're trying to work through is is a process looking big picture to. Where we hope this will last and we're going to depend on the future of the guidance with with bombers. Is there any one way in special events type situation that we're going to have and show that we're going to go. We're not trying to suck man again, we're trying to get people, so. Going back and I'm just seeing the error, sorry, but this is early there, so we're back bringing for example, care part. When we pass the liquor license for that, we will also pass a resolution that awaits we have a whole restriction that's vulnerable in our city cars. When we look at the yard, our folks, that is not considered part of evidence, it's open green space by our city's laws. So you have to increase and then events that you can allow for the labor of that to desire to have alcohol consumed in that green space. Last year when we did the kickoff of that, we have a license, a later license. Due to concessions, they are going to bring much of this period over, we no longer have that, so. It was this, what we're looking at is trying to construct one within our code that provides us the opportunity to fulfill the vision of the use of that space. So we've been working to to really try to figure out the best means to go through with that. And so in speaking today, let's uh I believe to. They were to to start looking at this in in a regular current, so we're not moving the one off three days once a year. This is going to be a a regular event, a sandwich or if it comes to have alcohol in the space. We won't be able to take an action by resolution for wave that section, but we're going to have to make action by city ordinance. The way of other sections of the ordinance. So what ultimately we're we're trying to work through is that conceptually, is the council comfortable? With alcohol being consumed in the green space during the yard out frontier and what are limitations in which you all wish to see that? We we are thinking this is a special event permit type activity that we would then work through the licensing process. Now, one of the challenges with green space is we don't have to read the own private temporary licenses for the major events to have alcohol. Or that's we did not construct. So as we work through that process, because there is an older license associated with green space, what that means is individuals could carry anyone going off. So within the code, you can have that happen for beer, you can have it happen for wine, you cannot have it happen for alcohol or beverage. So essentially what we would do. So essentially, what we would do, the partner with back hop or under storm, the one that they have to refill the alcohol to go. And I think we were first to attend would be able to go to back hop and be able to make their order. Collect their beverage, not open it, bring it to a designated area on the yard. And be able to open it there, consume and enjoy the music directly. But we're going to have to close restrictions around that system compared to a common cell. Farmers market, a bunch smaller scale, right? But you want those something and the only closest to a lot easier than the beverage. But they would be allowed to do that with with the policy that we're going forward on. It it's going to be a challenge in a sense of. From enforcement saying, when it's sometimes you can have alcohol, sometimes you can't. So that's the important stuff about things committing the process that we're going to be making here. But I believe everyone's in agreement that. We we're going to learn some things as we go through this process and couple of minutes adjustments. We'll be ready to be get to that by following resolution of how we see what's going on in the same point. However, in the interim, I think since right now, I think the first farmer's market you set. We have one more council meeting after tonight. To be able to make some ordinance changes to provide for someone's opportunity for alcohol, certainly. At that first farmer's market event. So we're searching for receiving your feedback as to the alcohol consumption event during the yard that opens that. And it's then compared with them, we try to be working through some two provisions in order to populate multiple readings. At the next council meeting, they'll look some of that, those pieces in place if we make those those events. That are not again a live sale by day for their license. So we can offer those feedbacks, I appreciate your.
Well, I think when we created the yard, we anticipated or envisioned. Offering these opportunities for our residents to come out for special events. And I think that, you know, as we, as we attend other events in metro area. Um, you know, we see that they they're they're they are allowed to bring a basket with their. Their cheese and their bottle of wine and sit there and enjoy the music. So I think, I think we all envisioned that we would have that same sort of um. Opportunity and activity on the yard when we created it. So I I think you're headed in the right direction. Uh, so we can construct a policy that would just limit it to those special events. And if that's the case, how do people know when there's, how do we, how do we inform people? This is a special event where you can bring your bottle of wine and you can sit.
But I'm not. Why? I feel like you're saying in the post. How do you answer the question? Well, I mean, I hope you're seeing.
So back to my question. I can remember what it was gonna be. Um.
Identifying special events.
Power one, define a special.
Yeah, uh, yeah. How how would we inform the public that this is a special event where you can? And either purchase alcohol at one of the establishments or bring your own as opposed to being out on a bike ride with your. You know, your significant, significant owner and stopping by and telling you.
Right. Don't know that I have a great edge. That's that's eventually we pick it up. I think it's it's much new here to define once we have established that coming in the process. Uh, we talked about the sick over here. Why is it, you know, setting up something on the alcohol penalty, the QR code, the area, the same, and you make the order, those things. So we're still working here on this is very much a special trying to really meet the requirement to have somebody. I agree that short term, I think that's a potential for the fusion. As when when it's alcohol allowing the yard, it's not controlling alcohol. And that's sort of enforcement, say, for the best one, but I'm generally bottomless, deciding to allow it. And that's kind of what it is for this discussion tonight is. To take perspective from all of you on, do you want to allow it all, I mean, just getting special events? Um, it's it's my recognition, we struggle with special events, so I'll see what I do. We can implement itself.
Other constanzing questions?
So I guess one question I had to add, what were just two? Um, are we, are we talking about? Out there or wine that can be purchased from. Um, the court and from back pocket or to to what it 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 is, are we? I'm not sure I'm really, I want to understand the distinction in that and what would be what. So uh, do we, are we, do we have to impose or?
So the. If we do not have any licenses on that background, so there can only be one liquor license in a separate area. So what we're talking about is that we're small, we stay out of the less, there is not a liquor license that. So we don't have the opportunity to console provider of the the sales and services for that. So that means that we can, we the council can make a policy decision to allow consumption in that area. But we cannot, we should get to a certain license.
Okay. Um, and as far as do we envision that for farmers markets? That this would be at all the farmers markets, we'll just farmers markets, we're going to have some sort of music, entertainment, or is the point in that music is contained there?
Um, I believe I understand it's there's music lots of month that's settled in the farmers markets.
So there's um, there's music once a month. There's also. Movies once a month. And and so I think a little bit of guidance on, you know. If you want every farmer's market, I would refer, we have it every farmer's market last year. Where people could have alcohol, it's just going into movies and music. Last year, you're just starting to experiment with policies, which is the last few farmers, where it's sort of allowing people to consume it outside of the area directly. So I think a little bit of guidance from that, um. When when the three points C of those events and, you know, one thing, and you'll achieve, you can only at a high rate, but I just want to. Emphasize too, is there will be other events, we handle the horse, it will be enduring. A concert, you see, series this summer, um, at obviously, we did not totally best of that. Those will be different, there will be down always, there'll be more structure. And for in the arts, so, so, you know, we have a two. So we remember the guidance you're looking for tonight, George, just sort of my good events. Ultimately, the ordinance will apply bold and there will be matters for. At least the way it's current draft, now we achieve better as we need that. Alcohol now permitting, that's that's an actual. So we can actually alcohol basins. With still counts, especially in a special event.
Well, essentially, right now in the city, there there's four primaries, there's um, but we're trying to address in short term. One is with the alcohol situation, we're we're pretty comfortable with that with the government in the past. That's chapter forty seven in in our city code. Chapter forty eight, the one that defines this area as an open space and green space. Well, it's not necessarily part of it. So similar to what we learned on special occasions, we have part of chapter forty seven. We got an alpha chapter to integrate as well. But because of the frequency of the events, it's no longer a political situation. By resolution, it has to be worked through the work process. In addition, though, in our offices, it says it's fifty percent of alcohol that exhales. Or fifty percent of the alcohol, no minor change in press. So there's another area where we have to balance, we need to. Addressing that provision in the city program. The bottom piece is no one. The rather popular diversity has squatted out of the century, and again. Three days to walk off, we've got a collision, so allow us to make that way with the central. But because of the frequency, we have to take the ordinance. And thus to be able to make those sort of amendments and changes. So those are the orders we're calling to work through, really. To be able to settle this up, talk a little policy statement, but we're looking about the yard and the greens, so it's off of the biggest question tonight is. What do you want to get the alcohol consumption in that for a smaller scale of that? So the foundation that is as well as the lesser events where you're not going to have several hundred people that would. Require five ways of third legging it. So that's, that's what we're really. The part of the process.
We need, we need other concept improvements, but it seems to me to the um, the farmers market by itself is one of the special events. It happens, it happens every week. Um, and it's not, I don't think there's an expectation on a part of our public that they drink alcohol and they move from one member booth to the next member booth. Um, I think though, that if there is a movie or there is music provided in conjunction with that, that then makes it a special event. But that's my advice.
On this special event that we have, what in farmers market, there might as well present politics. And actually, margins and. I mean, minus that alcohol. So there's the way that you can separate this, including that as a farmers market, it's a bit more of a. And without alcohol, we have even this.
I don't, I don't know what it means, you know, leaving out the regular supervision.
Yes, that's what I'm trying, my fault we did that. You have this second inclusion that you have, you have alcohol, you have. They put it in the ocean, people would look up to that, people install it. And then listen to people.
We, so, let's assume that. We can, we can develop, you know. You all can give us guidance on what you might pursue that, so. We were in the process of ordering the picture on the real estate side. On one side, it's still missing something about the alcohol consumption area. On the other side, we're out of all the dysfunction. He can say in a definitive line, that is the alcohol consumption area. We think we got based upon. Again, we will probably have to adjust that a little bit. But I think we can create that area, it's really the ultimate decision on. The whole thing is, we want to, the one we are improbable that, you know, the high green space, we. You not, you want a certain section of it. That's, that's some of that elements that we have to really appreciate.
Well, I guess we go to you, the, I I think, I think I'm, you're outlining the approach, you're outlining your, you're talking about this music or. If there's a leadership. But my question would be, okay, so it's a movie. Does that mean, you know, it's coming to the air, well, you, everybody's a woman of mind, so that that figuring that out, how do you distinguish that? Um, that that I think that would be some of the, the need for that, but maybe you, maybe that's where you have the. Um, if you limit the location where you bring alcohol.
I think, I think the uh Camp Dodge events, the music they have there on the third month of June. Divisible to the model, of course. I mean, those are all the very thing for you. But many people who attend those those concerts are in a mask of cheese and wine everywhere and 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 there's no problems. There's no problems with, you know, fact that there are minors there, there's some problems because of. Anybody getting unruly, I mean, it's just, you know, people are are good about understanding what. What, you know, what they're allowed to do, what the expectations are, and it seems to work very well.
I guess I I do, I think I know myself. Coming in there, there's, there's a bit of a trouble with presidents and. And it's, it's police, so it's from the adults that are there. So, but again, this is kind of one of those conversation where you must show. Our, our street, we want to get on the onset, and we're going to learn to maybe long, you know, probably have the next.
And I would just add, achieving him to set it and start out with the very great point. We talked about staff level as we were in, in, in the drafts. This is something we really expect. Next year, we'll kind of have this vision, so we're looking, we're we're actually working on larger overall special event policy for the city. Kind of address those larger events that we're going to have, we block here in the yard, but also for the community, farmers. So we we really do need this as an option. Uh, and will we get everything right right away? I think we're trying to anticipate those pitfalls and we'll react to them to issue we have. Uh, but we we do think this is a forceful start in the policy.
Do you have to just, we're going to have these presents?
The the intention is to not to assign individual to an overtime center specifically here in the yard. Until we get to that five day liquor license, two separate doors to the first events, where before this opens at the end of June. But they're, we're anticipating somewhere between six hundred and a thousand. So with that, we will have clear officers, so we have the official supervisor, but they will be assigned here often. Most farmers like this, uh, the part of the season that has been out, we're sure when it gets out loud, we'll do that at those times. It's just entirely.
So walkroom occasions, you know, you love it. Please write on the street. We're uh starting to kind of run that, the council point mark.
I. So if, if you go into bombers and you buy a beverage. Then you want to take it out of your. We sort of. We can, we can, we can't open it inside that pocket and carry it out from there. We have to wait till it's, that's going to be there two years.
But but that's the reality of the situation, like, was the, the, they have under liquor licensing. Detail sales, so you could go and pass the server, you cannot crack that, open it, and pop the ball. Like a door, they didn't purchase that to go in the same ways that we're going. Instead of going home, they walked to the dozen, maybe the winner of the new yard would be so aside, and it might be the entire yard, it might be less than that. When that's the consumption area for the beer or what they want. That's, that's the rule, that's the law. If we, if we wouldn't force that not working well, but obviously that's pointing to such a regard.
When I do something, we need to go more to letting more happen than less. Do you need it easier to pull things back and to try to add a little things later? Um, and then as far as. Um, the very first event we had out here, we had a fenced in area for alcohol. And Tom and I were the only two in the pen. It it was, it was very uncomfortable and we were trying to get people to relax and enjoy. But it just, I am not for any designated pen geek. Those people.
The beer garden.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you have, I'm, I'm the same way. But at the same time, I think if it was a farmer's market and there's no. Music or anything, I don't think we should open that up for alcohol. I said it.
What's over there, councilman?
I I would just echo the sentiments. I I think that where we and where discussions are matched with our intentions are for the yard. I think that's good. I think we do need to start working or thinking through other events that things, especially when we get a hotel here, whether it's wedding or something. I would like to not see a answer, a distinct segregation. Um, signs perhaps, um, but again, I I actually think if we don't cast much attention to it and yet still inform the public, even on the outskirts of it. To be mindful of that, I think we need that. I think we need safety.
I don't have anything else, but I think you're on the right track. Do you do what you need?
I, I can say, where we're going. We, so what's expected, I get one more of those. So we have to be put in action on orders to be able to create the administration of all some of us. As we drive into the language right now, please choose the decision maker, we're not going to hold it. The volume of work is being done, trying to do this correctly. We need to prefer that we decide, but the city manager, whatever it is. Would probably be right thing to get this one around the way, but it's going to require quick action. I think doing one of these all for the units, all of us are going to have.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, completed our end up rooms for the possible work sessions, so we'll return. Yeah, uh completed our end up rooms for the municipal work section, so we'll return with our session.